Okay. Let me, uh, let me call to order the meeting of the City of Campbell Planning Commission for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We have a roll call though.
Commissioner Fields? Absent. Commissioner Medrussky? Commissioner Strasky? Absent. Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Present.
Pastor Campar?
Uh, present.
Chair Caesar?
Yeah.
Okay, we have quorum. Uh, my name is Alan Zissar. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission for the City of Campbell. Um, minutes, uh, minutes. So we had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any changes or corrections?
I'd like to, uh, for the, for item three, seven sixty-eight page, read on page four of the minutes. It says, um, commissioners noted, uh, the application was a great improvement from what was previously for the planning commission. That was not a universally shared opinion. Uh, I believe that was Commissioner Price's opinion, which, um, I think I stated, I believe, uh, Fields agreed with me that, um, he had done nothing of value except wasted here and knocked the two units of housing off of the project. Um, I also scolded the public to not ask us to try to skirt state law.
But this, the statement was, it was about an improvement over the first one?
Yes.
Okay, but what you're talking about is actually something else.
I don't think it's an improvement to lose two units of housing later.
Okay.
Like that was the, yeah, it was not a universally shared opinion.
Okay, that was just, that's fine, that's fine. If we can adjust the minutes to say that, uh, I don't, I don't, do you think it was consensus? I, I thought it was improvement. I, I don't remember everybody's opinion.
I don't think we took straw poll. Are you thinking I'd be happy if it said some commissioner said it was an improvement, some commissioner said it was, uh, not.
Okay.
That's all I had.
All right, anybody else? Okay, was that, was that adjustment? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the minutes advanced changed for the, uh, just, it's just now changed for the April twenty-third meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Medrussky?
Hi.
Commissioner Gray?
Hi.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Hi.
Pastor Campar?
Hi.
Chair Caesar?
Hi. Okay, that passes. Um, communications, general modifications, Director Eastwood, do you have any communications modifications or postponements to notify us?
Chair, so your planning commission, one is you have a distinct item on five, monitor changes changing, uh, start time for the planning. And number two note, senior planner Daniel Fama is sick, senior planner Stephen Rose, it's, you know, make two or three items.
Okay, that's it? Thank you. Okay, oral requests, I'll open, uh, for all requests, uh, this is the point in the meeting where any members of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. Uh, speaker can speak for up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Is there anybody here in the chamber or online that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Am I, okay. Okay, so I'll close that. And we'll move on to the meeting agenda. Uh, before we start on the agenda items, uh, I want to provide some information on how we will be conducting the meeting for each item. For each item, I, I will first announce the item and then ask for staff presentation. After which the commissioners may have some questions for staff. After that, we will open the public hearing and, and first ask the applicant or representative applicant to speak, followed by any other members of the public wish to speak. Uh, we'll first have any public speakers physically present and anyone attending via Zoom. Members of the planning commission may have questions for the applicant or any of the public speakers. Once we've received all public testimony, we will close the public hearing and the commission will then have discussion and then a motion and decision based on the nature of the item. Uh, before we start on the items, commissioners, do we have any disclosures regarding any of the items on the jet tonight?
I do. For item four, I lived for several years in Franciscan apartments in Six One All-Melee Drive and I engaged in an appeal against a renting priest there, which was unsuccessful at which I left the, uh, after which I left the apartment complex and moved elsewhere. Um, I was informed last time that I mentioned that because I have no current relationship with Franciscan apartments. I don't need to accuse myself, but I want to make clear that I, uh, I used to live there. I had disagreements with management.
Any, anybody else? No, I, I don't have anything to, uh, disclose either. Uh, okay, let's start with the first item. Uh, item number two, um, is item one, West Hamilton Avenue, conditional use permit, public hearing to consider request of, of, uh, parvits, uh, savvy to allow indoor live entertainment for my, uh, general alcohol sales associated with an existing restaurant, the Gene Restaurant with late night hours, two A M. Public closing time, Friday and Saturday. Um, uh, the application or consideration includes a conditional use permit. PLN two oh two-three dash one eighty-two staff is recommending that this project be deemed category exempt under CEQA. Uh, playing mission actions final recommended action, however, is that the planning commission make a motion to continue the public hearing to May twenty-eighth. Um, I guess, uh, I guess like the only question I have is, is what's the reason for that?
Uh, yeah, a little ahead of ourselves, I think, on, obviously noticing this meeting, there were a few loose ends, some kind of staff.
Okay. Let's see.
Um. I'd like to move the, let's make the motion.
Go ahead.
To the panel.
You need to open the public hearing.
I like to open the public hearing, okay. Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Even though we'll be continuing it possibly for the next meeting. Anybody may speak though, right? Okay, nobody? Okay. This, any, nobody online? Okay. I, I can close the public hearing?
I can proceed to the motion.
I proceed to the motion. Okay, so, uh, uh, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Chair. Uh, planning commission makes motion to continue the public hearing to May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can we have a vote? Commissioner Medrussky?
Hi.
Commissioner Gray?
Hi.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Hi.
Pastor Campar?
Hi.
Chair Caesar?
Hi. So that item is continued until the next, uh, planning commission meeting. Uh, item three, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan, public hearing to consider the city of Campbell, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan, the CIP for citywide projects for consistency with the Campbell twenty forty general plan. Final number PLN two oh two-four dash thirty-seven, staff is recommending that the project be deemed exempt under CEQA. Uh, the project planner tonight, Stephen Rose.
Thank you. Good evening, chairs this year, members of the planning commission. So, uh, this is a general overview of the purpose of the CIP. Uh, so each year the city does prepare a whole five-year capital improvement plan. It's used in the city to project future capital. The planning commission's, uh, scope is to review the CIP for consistency with the general plan. And the budget or merit of individual projects is really outside the scope of the planning commission's review. With that, I'm not planning on going over every single capital improvement plan project in the report, but I'll highlight the structure. It does provide a project description with, with the, the project name, the product summary, and then on the right, you'll see the actual general plan policies, which that, um, project isn't further as of, if you found consistent with the general plan as a result. And with that, staff is recommending that, that the planning commission adopt a resolution finding that the proposed, uh, capital improvement plan is consistent with the general plan. And we do have our public works department in the audience available tonight for any questions and finance.
Okay. Uh, questions? Start with, uh, Commissioner Buckbinder.
Um, I asked a similar question last year. I note that for bike infrastructure, we're putting sixty-five thousand plus eighty thousand, compared to about three million dollars for, um, street resurfacing. It's about five percent. Um, in terms of, you know, balancing uses between cars, bikes, this is, you know, lopsided. Um, the, the question I had is how, we're, we're planning for the next five years here, if I understand it correctly. If we get the sustainable transportation planning grant we're looking for, this means that we will be planning on doing a lot more bike infrastructure around the city. And does this mean that we can't use any of the resurfacing monies for that? Does this mean that our, uh, I would defer your question to our, we have our city engineer, uh, Amy Olay.
Obviously, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I couldn't. I'll be too far repeating. It was really hard to hear. I'm sorry.
Certainly. Um, I noticed that the funding for bike infrastructure is a small portion of the street resurfacing funding. The city is currently applying for a sustainable transportation planning grant, which pays for planning, but not implementation. Um, there had been some talk about using the street resurfacing funds to also put together bike infrastructure to build out the plan once we have it. Since we're talking about planning for, you know, five years in advance, does this current plan lock us out of using the street resurfacing funds for adding bike infrastructure five years from now?
So the, um, annual street maintenance program, I think that's what you're referring to for the street resurfacing. So what we do is the primary goal of the street resurfacing and annual street maintenance is to resurface our streets, right? But with that though, uh, we find ourselves having to comply with ADA issues. And so about thirty percent of that budget goes towards ADA compliance. And so what we also do along with that is that when we are out there resurfacing our streets, we want to look at our striping. And it's a good opportunity for us to implement bike facilities where there aren't. And if there's enough right of way and enough width, we definitely do consider those. So and a good example is our Hamilton, uh, project that we are designing currently. That is the annual street resurfacing. It's taking like four years of annual street resurfacing, uh, money for it, just because it's such a long stretch. So the example there is that we are not just going in and, um, redoing the pavement and, you know, getting a fresh, uh, code, new pavement surfacing, but we're looking at opportunities to introduce like complete streets elements. And what I mean by that is looking at areas where, um, you know, currently we do have some sort of bike facilities, but we are introducing green bike lanes throughout Hamilton where we can fit it. So it's within the width that we can accommodate. We definitely are looking into that. So through the, um, upcoming years for annual street maintenance, that's what we will do. Um, for every opportunity that we can, if we have street widths, we would incorporate bike facilities in there.
So just to clarify, when you say that you add, uh, green bike lanes, that's just the paint, right? They're not protected in any way?
Um, for, if we have right of way, so Hamilton, some areas we do, we're introducing buffer bike lanes also.
So that's.
Like a separation, like, uh, you know, like we have, uh, four to six, uh, feet and then you have the bike lane. So that's a little buffer. So that's what, that's, those are usually.
But there's no bollards or.
No, no, we just don't have that type of, um, um, width for that.
So if we, I, I guess what I'm asking is if the city's plans change, if we had a citywide bike and pedestrian plan which encompass that kind of thing, would street resurfacing funds be able to be used for that?
We might need to look into other sources because we can't just dedicate all of street resurfacing funds. Because the primary purpose of street resurfacing, annual street maintenance is to resurface our streets.
Right, I'm, I'm not talking about removing the whole thing, but incidentally, if you're repaving this street that you would dedicate a, a portion of it to, so it, it could be used for other infrastructure that's on the street?
If it's, um, striping and markings, yes.
But not bollards or, or curbs or any kind of protection?
Uh, we do redo our curb, but if we're looking at more extensive bicycle facilities, we'll need to look at those corridors specifically.
Okay, so that would have to come up in a following capital, um, capital plan, following capital plan?
Um, perhaps with additional funding?
We'd have to search for additional funding on top of the street, meaning it's funny. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, quite, while you're there ma'am, let me ask you, uh, and I'm not straying a little bit from our general plan focus. We usually do on this, on this topic because we like to talk about our projects, but mine's actually pretty similar to Commissioner Buckbinder. Uh, so you mentioned the Hamilton Avenue, uh, project and bike lanes. Now, I, in Hamilton, of course, the various points will be in San Jose. Yeah, well, how does Campbell work with San Jose on a project like that? Or do you work with San Jose? Do you just stick to the Campbell?
Oh, no, we definitely coordinate, uh, with our neighboring jurisdictions. So with the Hamilton project on the, on both ends, San Jose and also the expressway intersections with the county. So we're working with both jurisdictions. So with San Jose, what we do is coordinate and we, um, try to sync up as much as we can and, you know, find very good transitions. And so we've already shared our plans with San Jose in terms of how we want to expand our bike lanes.
You know, and, and that was actually a setup question by me because I live in, in the Moreland West area and one of the areas that our, our neighborhood association is, uh, is, uh, concerned about a little bit, I guess. San Jose put in a real nice bike lane, not protected, but a, a, a buffered lane, uh, at Santa Mas de Quino. And it ends at the Campbell, uh, border line, where Santa Mas de Quino, that becomes part of Campbell. And from what we've been able to tell, talking with San Jose people, not Campbell people, uh, if that Campbell, San Jose even had a bike lane in on the Campbell side, which isn't there. So I, I just don't, I guess I'm just making my pitch to just say, I wish that Campbell and San Jose were coordinating better on, on Santa Mas de Quino. Where a, a protected bike or a, really just, uh, even a class two bike lane would be a nice improvement, uh, because there's bicyclo school, there's, goes to West Mart, there's a middle school, uh, there's, it's a good area there for some coordination and, uh, from what we can tell on our neighborhood association, it hasn't happened.
I'd like to just throw in, that is something really, really good to bring up. If we get the sustainable transportation planning grant, we'll try and plan the same bike network to connect to San Jose's network there and, and schools and so forth.
So I know that wasn't a question, but I just wanted to make that pitch. But my one quick question that I did see is talking about the green paint for the bike lanes, and I think I saw this in here. Uh, that the green lanes are supposed to last for twenty years. I didn't know if that meant twenty years between painting or if that just meant structurally. Does that ring a bell with you at all or?
Well, I don't think the paint lasts twenty years on the pavement.
Okay, yeah, we, we, we repainted it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Campar?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so my interest is in superchargers. Campbell doesn't have any electric car, electric car superchargers that I know of. I know it has, um, uh, I guess Electrify America, but it doesn't have Tesla superchargers. And I was wondering why not? I mean, Campbell's. What's going place?
I can respond to it. Robbie, so community development director, we do have, uh, the charge point chargers and a few of the public parking facilities very close to here. Um, and I'll just acknowledge the planning commission, Campbell was approached by Tesla some time back with a proposal. Uh, I'll say at the time, um, decision from administration, state management department heads was to wait a bit for our climate action plan to allow the more comprehensive strategy of where we want to put EV charging system and superchargers. So I'd say wait for that process to go forward a bit, and I think we'll be ready to back and talk to Tesla charge point, EV charging providers, so I'm worried you could go.
But as far as funding for it, you know, shouldn't be planned on funding. And so when the action is in place, climate action is in place, that funding can be set aside as well, right? And then at that point saying, okay, now where is the fund's gonna come from?
Sure.
Is that something we can do now or?
Yeah, uh, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, uh, uh, is that something we can do now to set aside funding when the climate does happen?
All right, it's, I'll, I'll say two things. It's, uh, one, don't know the strategy yet. Uh, number two, there are actually a fair amount of grant funds out there floating at the state and federal level on EV charging. Probably, uh, apply for those. Pretty on Campbell's end, it is a bit, we're in budget discussions right now, is a bit of a lean budget year for FY twenty-five due to some increasing costs, some labor rent and some decreases on some of our tax revenue. So the next fiscal year is, it'd be a little hard to, to set aside monies from that. We did tell the council in our, uh, climate action kickoff meeting that would try to front load, uh, any grant applications and programs, uh, that plug into electrification or areas where we know the climate action plan's gonna go. So, so soon.
Okay, so thank you for that. And also, um, there are several, um, uh, retailers, Target, Whole Foods, who are interested, who put these in their parking lot because it attracts the type of customers they want. You know, is that something we can approach where we incentivize them?
Yeah, I'd say our best, uh, I mean, those are private decisions between whoever it is, Tesla, Electrify America, the retailer or the shopping center owner. Best thing we can do is streamline the permitting process. It's my knowledge. Uh, we have a very streamlined EV station process. So that's Campbell's rules.
Thank you. Thank you.
Third question.
So I just, I just, I just wanted to ask, uh, just to be clear, uh, on the, on the page two of five staff report, it's, it says, uh, new capital projects. So this short list of, that adds up to five point eight million, are these projects that were not in the previous year?
Yeah, these are new projects to the five-year CIP. So some of these are extension of, these are annual projects and we're adding the fifth year. Um, there are three.
This is, is this the total CIP? The five point eight million is the total CIP for the city?
That's a total for the new projects.
For just the new projects?
Yes, exactly, for the nine new projects.
And, and just, you know, for identification, for identification, on, on, on something like the ADA transition plan, being at fifty thousand dollars. I know there was some more detail on that, but i- is that like new money that's come in? Or is that just money that is being put in from the general fund?
That's from our capital improvement reserve, our CIP, our funds.
So is that like just a continuation? Because, uh, of, of, of last year's, that just, last year's was fifty thousand, this year's is fifty.
uh of 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 last year's, that just, last year's was fifty thousand, this year's is fifty thousand?
Uh, my name is Nora Long, Assistant Finance Director. Um, to answer your question, on an annual basis, the city allocates a certain amount of funds from the general fund to the CIPR as as may be referenced. Um, and for the ADA transition plan, it's funded solely by CIPR, which comes from the general fund.
That would be uh like the the bike and pedestrian would be similar? That'd be a, that says, actually, that says construction tax and grants.
Correct. So the the bike and ped project is funded by construction tax and grants, so that one is not funded by the general fund.
All right. Um. Anybody else have any more questions?
Yeah, I have one more. Um. So I notice there's some budget for traffic calming program. Are we um underfunded for that? Are there more requests than we can service or are we meeting demand?
As as far as I'm aware for traffic calming, we do have that project in our five-year CIP and there are additional funding within that five-year CIP that's still available and um not currently utilized. Uh, but we do plan to add additional years in the coming future as CIPR funding comes available in the future, out of years within the five years CIP. Um, but to answer your question, we currently do have.
Okay, so there there's not people who are asking for traffic calming and unable to get it?
We do get requests and we um following the policy. Uh, we have implemented a few projects and actually we have one underway. Um, so I would say that with the current funding, um, i- i- it seems to be a good level.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I just have not, just one more question. Um, just again, kind of from my identification, on 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 any or all of these, are are these typically subcontracted out or are any of these done by public works?
Um, I would say it's a combination. It depends on the specifics of the project. Um, so for.
Say, for example, uh, converting um converting curbs to ADA. Is that done internally? Is that done by the city or did we contract that kind of thing?
For the ADA curb ramps, we contract that out.
What, what, you know which which some of what some of these are done actually at the city?
Well, the according to for these, these um nine projects, these sidewalk curbing gutter improvements is a combination of city staff and uh contracting a portion of that out. But the rest, I would say, is predominantly as contracting the projects out. If it's a, you know, if it's a larger CIP project, it could be the staff does a portion of it, portion of the design and contract some of it out for design services and then the construction is definitely contracted out.
Thank you. Any else have any more questions? Thank you. We appreciate it. Um.
I think a few are part of the process for me.
We need to go into a discussion. Anybody want to have a say specifically in general?
I've said that piece.
All right. Okay. I guess we can uh open it up for public open it up for public uh comments. Anybody either here or online that would like to speak on the site? Yep. Okay. So I'll close public comments. And unless there's commissioners who want to have uh further comment, I'll I'll ask for motion. Well, I'll move that the uh planning commission on City Campbell determined City Campbell's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan is consistent with the Campbell twenty forty general plan.
Second?
A second.
You have a second? You have a vote? Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolfmaner?
Aye.
Pastor Concord?
Aye.
Chair Zisser?
Aye.
That's unanimously. Thank you, thank you. Stephen, thank you. Hope for the finance part. Okay, next item. Uh, item four, six oh one Al Almerita Drive Extension of Time, Public Carrying to Consider Request of Rain Tree Capital LLC to extend the approval period of a previously approved site and architectural review permit with density bonus pre removal pro- pre removal permit that allowed the construction construction of a three-story sixty-unit apartment building within the existing one hundred and eighty unit apartment community, the Franciscan located in six oh one Almerita Drive for uh an extension time for additional two years. Uh, the file number is PLN two oh two four dash forty-four. Staff is recommending this project be categorically exempt under CEQA. Planning Commission Action is final, this appealed. Write it to the city clerk within ten to ten hundred days. Uh, Stephen.
Thank you again, Chair Zisser and members of the planning commission. So this is a request as just mentioned for a two-year extension of approval for a sixty-unit apartment building within a existing one hundred and eighty unit apartment community. The request for the two-year extension has been made in response to adverse market conditions, which have been noted by higher interest rates and challenging lending requirements. And with that, staff is recommending the planning commission adopt a resolution, make the extension of time request. That concludes staff's presentation.
Yeah, that's easy. Um, so that's when when we ask, have questions, Professor Majewski, you have any questions?
I am wondering what kind of staff resources go into this and is there a reason or can't, is it beneficial to the city to, or is it possible to adopt something like the proposed SB nine thirty-seven? So we can like make this missed here real. I don't know if I'm using the right.
So to take a citywide action to extend all approvals would require a legislative act at the city council, so we'd have to present an item. Um, just before you, if we don't have that many pending projects which which likely warrant the staff time and commitment to do so. I I think what Daniel was indicating in the report is that there is pending legislation just recognizing similar market conditions and challenges facing projects that are, you know, faced by this project as well. It just didn't happen to line up with this particular project window. If that legislation passes, it also renders such a motion like an action moot. Is it the council were to take an action that is also being subsumed by state law? And it could cause some degree of confusion to applicants and the applicable.
Commissioner Buck, Commissioner Craig. Last, Commissioner Buck.
Um, I guess are we confident that uh it's gonna get built next time? Or are we just waiting on interest rates to change? If they do get built, it doesn't give.
If I could borrow your ma- your crystal ball, as well as the belt, I mean, essentially, if the if the market conditions persist, just like we're seeing now, the higher interest rates and difficult securing lending requirements, presumption would be that those conditions would also continue to conclude the construction of the project. We all hope that they'll they'll improve and provide an opportunity for the project to get built.
Okay. I'm positive.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I, I mean, I would be, um, I wa- I was likely to go along and say, yeah, it's a good idea, that makes sense, the climate condition, until I saw this statement on, in attachment B, which is page page fifty-six of our pamphlet of our thing, but it would be attachment B, page three of six. Third paragraph, which is in the middle of the paragraph number three, which is in the middle of the page. Um, so there was some, uh, I guess density bonus calculation, thirty-five percent density bonus calculation, and the number came out to seventy point seven. And it said rounded up to seventy-one, and I'm like, what? Rounded up? I thought Campbell doesn't round up. They always round down. And when I saw this, then I'm definitely for this project because I think it's going in the right direction, rounding up. So I just wanted to, um, I just want to, I'm seeing this right. I'm posing as a question, so it it's just like the chair. Is this, is am I seeing this right?
Or seeing a crack?
That's it, thank you. At the record.
Appreciate it. Um, uh, you know, it it's just, I think we're all disappointed that this isn't something that can go ahead, any of these projects that we've proved, you know, and we've proved this project. And um, uh, it was uh good to go. Um, uh, after two more ye- after the extension to two years, then there's a question of whether we extend it again or we ask them to reapply, right?
Correct.
Thank you for the concise answer. Um, uh, do we have no, there is, there is real no choice here, right? I mean, we we can either deny the extension and then it it would then require them at some point in time to reapply, or we can just give them the extension.
I suppose clarification would be that the applicant still has their remaining window to get an issued building permit, but the likelihood of that occurring is.
What's what's the window at this point?
I think it was until May
of next year.
No, I I think it later like.
Oh, so a half ago.
So, yeah.
So we're giving him this extension, so there's, there's two, it's gonna be another two years.
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay. Do, um, can I ask something about the project, just as a, since it's in the agenda, the whole description of the project? Um, just for future reference, I guess, when it show up, um, uh, the 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 new item, the new, I guess, clarification in the in the other commissioners. So the the additional sixty units, it's gonna be a multi-story building. The twenty are gonna be affordable, right? Twenty, which is correct, a nice number. Um, but there are already a hundred and eighty units in in this, that Francis is gonna, are any of the existing units affordable?
So at the time of this development request having been made, because they were exercising state density bonus law, all existing units are kind of encapsulated within that original calculation, which is where you're getting to that number. That's because the apartment community, they do not have any deed restricted units, so the typical traditional understanding of an affordable unit, there are none. But state density bonus law also requires, want to consider existing rates, rental rates, or occupants which are at lower income levels and absent five-year uh rental roles of their community, they were essentially imposed a requirement that they needed to have an assumption affordability, which is kind of why you're seeing the the percentage allocated in this project. Being higher.
Okay, so it kind of makes it up for it. Okay. All right, I I, anybody else have any more questions? Um, let's see where I.
I'm trying to ask my question.
Um, do we open this up again? Do we open this up for uh? Uh, we open this, open this up for public uh comments? We, uh, anybody who wants to speak publicly on this item? Here or online? Just come forward. Could you like turn that on, hit the lights? And and a circular thing. Yeah, hit the white, white side. State your name, man.
Yes, everyone, um, so my name is Alan Chong with Rain Tree Partners, uh, with the applicant, worked with Stephen Rose on this project years ago. Uh, and I just wanted to say that we we kind of avoid the same frustration in stopping to uh progress this project further uh to the point that it is now, unfortunately, mainly due to market conditions like Stephen had mentioned in his presentation. Uh, I did want to reemphasize that we are long-term holders investors in all of our portfolio assets, Franciscan being one of them. Uh, we bought this project back in two thousand seventeen, invested a heavy amount of capital into it, existing um community and you know, it's a matter of when, not if, uh, when we build this project, uh, we've continued to retain the whole design team, uh, continue to keep our pulse in the market to get a, you know, better understanding of when we could do this project for. So again, uh, just want to reemphasize that, you know, we do plan on doing this project, so.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, you have a question? So as you, let's say this happens again and again, and as it before, right? Sometimes the code changes by then, you know, that's one of the risks run over, let's say, solar panels becomes a requirement and or electric becomes a requirement. Um, uh, how how would that be handled, you know, do you go and change the plans to make sure they're up to code or are you vested with the code that you got approved?
From my understanding, we are vested based off of one of the plans we're entitled, so I believe it's based off of twenty, it's a twenty nineteen code, say. Uh, so I guess we would have to work with staff to understand it. For for some reason, over the next two years, we don't rest this project what our options are. I will say, uh, we did submit our plan, our first round of plan checks back in two thousand twenty-two, but again, the lines change, that's done. So we are committed again, uh, it's just.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Apple?
I guess are any of things, so it seems like this project like just barely penciled and then economic conditions changed and it didn't, and changed again, then wiped again. Um, are there any particular restrictions the city put on it or most of the happen place that made it so it just barely penciled, or is that just the nature of the construction market at this point?
Yeah, I wouldn't say just barely penciled, uh, but yeah, the city's been very cooperative, working with Stephen, of course, the COVID, uh, here the whole time. The city's been very helpful, uh, they had a case of restrictions.
When I say just barely pencil, I mean, it's the interest rates change and now it doesn't.
Yeah, well, it's a combination of the streets, um, increasing construction costs, continue to increase as we. Fortunately, I think we are seeing a slowdown, but we haven't seen any decrease just yet. So, you know, those two factors really have uh been this project challenging before.
Thank you for trying it. Hopefully we'll see it move forward.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Nobody else? Yeah, my close public caring, um, any of the commissioners really want to make comments on this? Commissioner Buck.
Uh, I guess, I appreciate the word liberalized development, but like, boy, it feels like we really wasted those years when interest rates were lower and money flowed freely and we just wanted to be real careful with everything. We were real careful and we didn't build much and now it's hard to build things. Darn.
She great. Well, no, obviously, we're all frustrated. I I don't think there's too much we can do here. We want, we want project and you know, those twenty, uh, those are VLI units, not just LI units, so that's a big plus for the city. So hopefully it'll happen and we'll all open, so.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, so if the opportunity becomes to build some of the units, maybe not all of it, you know, um, that's better than none of the units, you know, so uh, you know, I know money's tight, you know, maybe money's tight to build all of them, all sixty, but maybe twenty can go forward, you know, so if that's becomes a possibility, you should, you know, that is progress for us. So, thank you.
Well, just just to respond to your comments, it's a, it's a multi-story building with sixty units in the middle. So I, it it's not a bunch of individual, it's my understanding. So it's not like the existing facility where they have multiple groups of buildings. It's it's one new building that's gonna be up in the middle that's gonna happen. So it's a three, three or four-story building that has sixty units. Kind of hard to do a partial of that. Um, I'm I'm just, you know, I mean, yeah, if they could, if they could, if they downsize it and if meets, it it could, it can pencil out, I I I'm sure that they would look at that, but uh, my take is on, uh, as I said, it's, uh, you know, it's like, uh, this was a a gonna be a nice, uh, a nice item and, uh, I think people were looking forward to. We hope that interest rates go down soon, we can write letters to the Fed or whatever. And, uh, we can hope that maybe it'll happen sooner than the two-years extension, so, um. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to have it here. Adopt a resolution. A resolution. Uh, referencing attachment A, approving an extension time request to extend the approval period of previously rooted site architectural review permit, the density bonus true removal permit for a period of two, two years.
A second. Second. Do you have a motion and a second, can we take a vote? Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Campcar?
Aye.
Commissioner Sizil?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, Stephen. That concise. New business. New business, amending the start time of planning commission to seven P M. Plan Commission consideration resolution amending the start time of regular scheduled public meetings to seven P M. P L N two oh two four dash seven two. Um. The recommended action is to move it to seven P M. Um. This, there's not a staff presentation on this. Uh, Commissioner Majewski, would you like to comment on on this?
I'd love, I'd love to do a little earlier and help the staff get back to their homes, especially earlier, because they're here a couple days.
So you're favored. Commissioner Craig?
Yeah, I'm all in favor.
Strongly. Commissioner Buckbinder?
I'm all for it.
Okay. Commissioner Campcar?
I am.
Hey, you know, I, I'm, uh, I have no status, really dear, no stake on this, I'm, I'm, I'm retired. I have no children or a full-time job, and to me, it's like if, if the commissioners that have more um. Things to deal with, uh, I, I'm, I'll go a gong majority, it's fine with me. And, uh, hopefully we'll make it better for the staff, I don't, I don't, I don't know, you guys work late no matter what, it seems, so. So, um. They have to open a public hearing now? I don't know, do we, this is, uh, this is a new business item, I, I don't know, we, there's no public hearing, no, I don't know. Well, okay, why, why don't we, why don't we just open up public hearings, there's anybody who wants to comment on this? Might be.
Nobody.
Opposed or favored? Nobody? Okay, we'll close. We'll close that and.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the planning commission adopt the resolution amending the starting time of the regularly scheduled public hearings to seven P M, beginning June eleventh.
It's that incorporating the language of the desk guide.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes, incorporating, he said language of the desk guide, okay, tell us by email.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Campcar, can you vote? Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Campcar?
Aye.
Commissioner Sizil?
Aye.
I get it, it's unanimous, so, starting in the first meeting in June, you'll be at seven P M.
Okay, stick quick note on Sark is nice chair, Campcar and. Yeps, okay, and just to note, if there are short items, I think we'll try and hold six thirty, if they're long items, we'll start at six thirty.
Good, thank you.
Uh, study session. Housing legislation update. Study session is gonna say a key legislation in case law pertaining to the development of housing projects. Recommended action, the planning commissioner received a report to seek clarification from staff as necessary. Um, who's thinking of this, Stephen?
Thank you again, Chair. So the purpose of this tonight's study session is to provide an update and overview of recent state legislation case law. It's also serving to educate the planning commission on the impact of these laws implementation. I'll also just add that there's a whole world of legislation related to housing development, we did focus today's study session on items which are in the report. Uh, if it's, if the planning commission has interest, we could possibly, we, we do intend on doing uh, updates on legislation in the future, so there'll be opportunities for future other bills and discussion items as well. So with that, um, the first item which we discussed in the study session is state density bonus law. Uh, just kind of caption the key sound bites of these two, uh, court cases, where the Schreiber versus City of Los Angeles had determined that concessions are no longer required to demonstrate that they lead to cost reductions. Historically, state density bonus law said, if you have a concession, you need to indicate exactly how and what cost benefit that will have, it was usually requiring cities to impose a requirement for what's called a pro forma, so that you're saying, yes, I do need this concession, I need to have an additional story added to my building, how does adding the story make sense for a concession, well now, we can no longer ask that question, how that, adding a story results in cost reduction. For example, not to say that you'd use a concession that way, probably use a waiver for separate discussions. Um, Bankers Hill, one fifty versus City of San Diego. This is probably the most significant one, and probably, probably the primary driver of tonight's study session. Is it, it established that developers are now entitled to, to use, to waive all development standards, even objective standards that would prevent a project from being built as designed. This is to say that if you have any standard, height setback, um, design requirements, material requirements. A developer may use an unlimited number of waivers on the project by just merely by qualifying as a state density bonus project to alleviate these requirements from that project. It's exceedingly powerful. Uh, this court case, um, does up, it has major upheaval on our, kind of our understanding of the application of standards. This is why we're presenting it before you with actually a couple, a number of case studies. Uh, some of these are presented in the report, but I'm trying to keep it fresh, I'd provided a kind of a new take on some of them, so you guys have to follow along. Uh, case study number one, so say for example, a state density bonus project has requested the city to grant a waiver to eliminate parking requirements. So in this particular case, it would not be applicable. And the reason for that is that state density bonus law already established just minimum parking standards, which may not be lowered further by exercise of a waiver. There are of course other laws as we've, as I believe we've discussed in the past, AB twenty ninety-seven, which do allow for elimination of all parking requirements for a major portion of the city, like nearly let's see, three, nearly two, two fourths of the city, like half the city uh, is already eliminated from parking, so it's largely moot. I just want to emphasize this as an example where a waiver would be eligible, you couldn't push it down any further. What state density bonus law already allows, if you're outside one of those, you know, parking reduction areas. Uh, as another case study, uh, density bonus project comes forward and requests the city to grant a waiver to eliminate the city's setback requirements. Could this be allowed by state density bonus law? Yes. Even if a city's development standard is objective, a waiver may be used to alleviate the requirement if it would present, prevent the project from being built as designed, use that quote again. So, this city's new multifamily development science standards, they do include setback standards like R two additional code had, also has standards such as adjacency requirements, like where you're abutting single family, kind of what we're trying to hopefully achieve is prevent that looming building from being up against a single-family home. Unfortunately, what this is telling us is that state density bonus law, through use of waivers for which there is an unlimited number could alleviate, could alleviate a product of these requirements. Uh, third and final case study, a state density bonus project require, requests the city to grant a waiver to remove onsite trees including tree species and sizes that are protected by the city's tree preservation ordinance. For example, you've got a grove of redwood oak cedar or ash trees on the property, all of a sufficient size. City's requirement to, to retain those trees does constitute a development standard, which is also subject to a waiver. So developer could request summarily to remove the trees to allow for the project to occur. So, um, we can stop as a suggestion to the, to the Chair after each section, or I can just wrap up the presentation, we revisit each topic.
I think we're gonna go over the streamlining process.
Correct, so next up is S B six eighty-four. So we'll be happy to cover now. So this is one of two bills which will be effective July first, twenty twenty-four, this is up and coming. Staff is looking at preparing an interim or urgency ordinance which would go to our city council in June of this year, just, just before the effective date. Uh, it's our intention to establish these temporary standards to facilitate these projects until such time more permanent. Comprehensive standards can be rolled into our city's multifamily development science standards. It's part of a broader and more comprehensive update, we're working on it this time.
So, if the project comes in while this urgency uh, urgency requirements are in. What, you know, how, how does staff handle it?
So, the, the urgency ordinance will actually serve that very function, it'll provide guidelines and parameters for how this project will be handled. By and large, as I'll probably cover in the next couple slides, S B six eighty-four prevents the city from establishing unique or specific development standards by virtue of a project exercising six eighty-four. So the urgency ordinance is largely just serving to codify, to provide guidance to staff and to the public as to how, how to kind of take in a project and what the rules really are. So they understand how it relates to our other codes and standards and understanding which of those are being preempted by this law. So that, I wanted to highlight, I, I'm not gonna go over every single bullet point, um, in the study session, but I did want to kind of highlight those which are yellow here on the screen. I think these are kind of more interesting or apply to ninety-nine percent of the S B six eighty-four projects. So really to qualify, the, the site first and foremost has to be zoned for multifamily residential development. And the project itself has to occur, it has to result in less than or equal to ten lots. And also the same for, uh, ten, less than or equal to ten units. Um, there are other kind of extenuating circumstances that apply about the type of units or things on the site which might be demolished. But more likely than not, a challenge for some to try to exercise this law is that the site cannot have units which are occupied by tenants last five years. Uh, in terms of density requirements, so although we, we have density ranges established for several of our multifamily develop, uh, multifamily land use designations to the city, it does provide kind of an override provision saying that it notwithstanding whatever your land use designation says, say it's capped at a certain amount, you could go up to thirty units per gross acre, make the goal to thirty units per acre. There are exceptions to that, which is really kind of based on whether or not the site is designated as a housing opportunity site, the city designated uh, I think around a hundred sites, part of the housing element update. If a site is designated shown on that map as a housing opportunity site, the project has to also result in at least as many total units and as many low and very low income units as had been projected by the housing element for the parcel. If the site is not designated on the housing opportunity site map, the project must result in at least as many units as the maximum allowable density of the parcel. So these are kind of like combining factors, you're saying in some certain situations, less than thirty is great, but that doesn't mean you go down to zero. It means if, if, if the housing element or the general plan land use designation allowed up to five, six, ten units on that site, you must minimally build that many in order to comply. And then on the affordability side, each of the sites in the housing element were assigned in a presumption on the number very low, low and moderate, and even above moderate income units on their sites, they must result in at least as many of the low and very low income units as projected by housing. Uh, just in terms of development standards, um, again, kind of cherry picking from the list here, uh, it, you cannot prohibit lots which are six hundred square feet or larger, so it's meaning six hundred square foot's really the floor now. Um, you have to allow for a result for projects with three to seven units of one point O in terms of F A R. And projects with eight to ten units would be permitted a, a floor area ratio of one point two five. In terms of parking standards, um, admit, uh, the city may not require more than one space per unit. Of course, our circumstances were less than that, like zero would come into play, kind of like where AB twenty ninety-seven is. But also unique to S B six eighty-four, it also extends it to uh, that, that allowance to also include any site within one block of a car share vehicle. Um, in terms of setbacks, the city may not oppose side or rear setbacks which are greater than four feet from the original lot lines, is the boundaries of the site as it exists today. Not between lots which are created by the bill. So it, really any setback between buildings on a site, so you could have attached units, that's okay. So long as, except as maybe otherwise accepted by the building code, if you have windows or the types of openings you need to comply building and safety requirements. Sorry, uh, so this slide should be titled, um, moving on to S B four now, right, it looks like I have a title error.
If you have questions, we ask.
Yeah, certainly.
Can you put, uh, two, three slides up? Uh, you said the site, uh, one of the requirements was up to ten units and then up to ten lots. So by point in all, is, is it possible for there to be, let's say, five lots, but ten units total, so two lots per unit, is that a possibility?
Yes, that would be possible.
And then because it's more than seven, let's say there are ten, ten units, now the, the F A R has to be one point two five, or it could be up to one point two five.
That, that is a, it's an up to allow, so I'm trying to get the screen to share here as well.
It means that we as the city cannot have it, get anything below one point two five.
Okay, okay, and then the other, um, still the thing you said upon there has to be as many units above market share as below market rate, um, can you clarify that a little bit?
So that, that is a provision which is unique to, sorry about to jump to the slides here again. So if the site is a designated housing opportunity site, get to that slide real quickly. So this is the slide which, which brings up that point, so if you are a designated housing opportunity site, the housing element and our opportunity sites had certain assumptions that went to each of them that they were assigned a certain, a certain number of very low or low income units. So, some, in some cases, you could be assigned several, uh, low income units if you were a designated housing opportunity site, in which case your project must provide those deed restricted very low or low income units as part of the project.
Even, even in six eighty-four?
Even under six eighty-four, if it's a designated housing opportunity site, if you're not designated, you only need to result in as many units as the maximum allowable density.
With the market rate or not?
Right.
If you're above market, okay, right.
Now, of course, those projects too would be subject to city's inclusionary ordinance if they were, say, building ten units or as amended as part of the city's upcoming inclusionary ordinance update and access study, looking at possibly lowering that threshold compliance. That could apply a different type of affordability requirement on projects, say, greater than five units.
So right now, if, if a project came in at with six eighty-four at ten units, do any of them have to be affordable, or I guess?
Fifteen percent of them would still be subject to the city's inclusionary ordinance, so that would be two of the ten units as rounded.
So we're rounding up again?
Correct.
Okay. And if there's nine, then probably then, then you have to provide one. Because fifteen percent of nine is less than one point five.
I believe that also rounds up to two. Oh, we know, well, at nine, well, under the current inclusionary ordinance, it's not a question, question we'd answer because it's not subject to the requirement. So, the, the inclusion ordinance as it's written at this exact moment in time triggers at ten. And probably, and again, by the effective date, so there won't be a window of time where the, that the interim ordinance will be in effect after the effective date of July first, where our new inclusionary ordinance and provisions which kind of lower the threshold will not be in force in effect. Which will be, so again, there will be a window where nine-unit projects would not be subject to any affordability requirement.
Because, because currently it's ten or more.
Correct.
Okay.
Hey, can we, can you just finish doing S B four and then we'll just go back? See if anybody else has questions out of here, so.
Okay, S B, S B four, tried to delete half of that, can, let's get in there. Um, so again, it has an effective date similar to S B, uh, six eighty-four, which is, uh, July first, twenty twenty-four. Similarly, staff is planning on presenting interim ordinance before council in June. And again, just like S B six eighty-four, we're looking at having permanent standards to be reflected as part of the a more comprehensive update of the city's multifamily development science standards. Uh, on the screen here, and I, I didn't mention on the previous slide, this is just showing possible properties. It's not to say every single. It's not to say every single one of these properties will be included in SB four. But it's generally it's sites which are institution, are owned by religious institutions or higher education sites. It's a kind of a complicated exercise because we need to determine if each site individually. Um, is tax exempt and meet other requirements of ownership? But it's kind of showing a, like a, in a mass view, the the potential impact of the bill. Uh, again, just cherry picking parts from the report, which I thought were more apropos here, um. In terms of the property itself, it must be land owned on or before January first of twenty twenty-four. By qualifying faith-based or higher educational institution. This is a religious institutions couldn't just go buying up properties that exercise this bill today. If they already own the property, then those properties could qualify. There is an affordability requirement for these projects. They have to be a hundred percent affordable. Uh, in terms of density. It allows for in it, when it, when, again, when it's in a zone which allows for residential uses. It would allow for density allowed by the land use designation, the properties the city has designated forty, it would allow forty. Or thirty units per per acre, whichever is the greater. And then if it's located in a zone which does not allow residential uses, so say the city has a. Public facilities designation for the property, some other designation which does not allow residential development. City has to allow for the greater of the density allowed on the parcel or on an adjoining parcel. Or a a forty inch per acre. So you have to allow for the density allowed on an adjoining parcel or forty inch per acre is probably a better way of saying that.
Question. Is there, they have to be a hundred percent below market rate, can they stack density bonus?
You can combine state density bonus law with SB four.
So the actual density allowed is going to be some multiple of that?
Correct, i- i- yeah, you could, you could do up to a hundred percent density bonus under the new state density bonus law. So you could double that. And there are also possible other ways of getting dense more units on top of that as well.
So forty becomes a eighty units.
If they were to do a, yeah. A hundred percent affordable housing development project could qualify. Now granted, their affordability uh provisions of SB four. Only require, it says, it essentially allows twenty percent of the units to be moderate. I'd have to look at exactly the tables, see how you combine. Because the, there's a, there's a standard table for state density bonus law, which gets you day far. And then in order to get the state double density bonus, which could get you up to a hundred percent. You have to kind of combine across income categories. So exactly how that reconciles with twenty percent moderate allowance allowed by SB four, I'd have to look at. But yes, conceivably, it's possible if they provided a low enough level of affordability, they could double the densities provided by the building. It actually specifically allows for. Great question. Um, sorry for all these title slides, I must miss something there. This is all SB four. Just to reiterate, um, again, on kind of interesting points and development standards, so it does allow for the greater. Of one story above the maximum building height allowed on the parcel. Or the maximum building height allowed on an adjoining parcel. So you kind of have to look at. What the, so if we have a a housing, if we have a religious institution. Which happens to be right next to one of our transit oriented sites, which allows up to seventy-five feet in height. It would allow for it to mimic that same height if some, if a. Religious institution was ever so old as to build a tower that height. It's not out of the question, but but I think.
But but on the other side is if, if, if the, if there's a church in a residential neighborhood with, where the Jason. Uh, uh, no more than two story.
In which case it would not advantage them. So they would be kind of more or less following what the allowable height of plus one story.
So, uh, you know. One of the churches in the, in the, in a residential district that has extra land and they can't necessarily put up. An eight story building if there's only a story.
Correct, they couldn't, they couldn't use the the height of the adjoining parcel to benefit of that situation.
So if people who bought, built their own Wesley Manor building, just that Wesley Manor is currently higher than seventy-five feet, it's built the city down. So maximum building height allowed in an adjoining parcel. That would not advantage them. Because they couldn't build as high as the existing, I guess I'm saying. Could they use that to exceed our height limit? If an existing building exceeded our height limit, because it says maximum building height allowed. Is that the actual legal language or is the maximum building, or the existing building height?
I I believe that the, that the, that the intent to SB four is to say that based on the development standards as they exist today. So if that building were to go away, what is allowed, it'd be like, say, a five story tall building on that site. So. In in which case you'd only be allowed. What is currently allowed under our current codes and standards?
Okay, but if the parcel happened to be in a transit oriented neighborhood, will be allowed a seventy-five foot. Height limit, they could get one story above that and they could exceed our.
Correct. Uh, so just moving down here on the slide, uh, use requirements is kind of interesting. So obviously. SB four is allowing you to have residential uses on sites where it may otherwise not be permissible. Uh, it goes on to say religious institutional uses or any use previously existing or legally permitted. Could be allowed. And then it also goes on to allow for these, this introduces a concept of ancillary uses. Uh, these are uses which would be permitted on the ground floor of any new building which is proposed. Which in the, if the site has a single family residential zoning designation or a single family zone. It would allow childcare centers and facilities operated by community-based organizations to be that ground floor. But if it's in another zone, which means you're in a commercial zone or somewhere else with the city. It would allow those commercial uses which would be permitted by that zone. But without a conditional use permit, so bypass the conditional use permitting requirements. In the, in the particular case, the city would be both our administrative conditional use permit and also our conditional use permitting processes. That's just a, that's an example. Uh, there are a few additional requirements of SB four, um, most notably. Projects which utilize this bill must pay prevailing wage, which is. Served as a barrier to some in developing projects under some of these bills. Um, just given the current financial markets, difficulty financing, as we've heard earlier tonight. Uh, you also must satisfy parking requirements as outlined in the bill, which really speak to a minimum of once. Who allows for uh as few as one space per unit. And again, except in those circumstances where you're near rideshare or public transit. In those circumstances, no parking could be imposed by the city. And with that, that brings us actually to the end of the presentation. So available for any questions that you may have.
Why are you laughing? We, can we go back to, uh. And ask questions, we started the. The earlier items and then just work our way through. If anybody has any, uh. Questions. I I'm just, you know, let's, let's not worry about going down the line. Let's, let's just, uh, if if anybody has a question about. The, 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 what's, what's the first one? The, uh. The, the state density bonus laws and stuff. I mean, I, you know, I have a question about, you know, the objective standards thing, obviously, that like it, it, it sounds to me like it basically. Maybe we don't need to be planning commissioners anymore. We can meet once every six months. Uh, it 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 sounds to me like this case, unless it's, uh, challenged, that. Uh, objective standards go out the window. And and the, I guess the question I have, you know, the thing I wrote down was the as design. The as design thing is developer comes up with the design, submits it, that's the as design. Is that correct?
That, that's, so I'll respond. And I just want to make sure the planning commissioner understands it. It's a super important point. So before developer has to look at our standards and say, here's where I need to keep your standards, this splits the script. The developer could come in and might use the staff, pose a gigantic ball. Or any shape you could think of, say, I have a vision of this as my design. And I've designed it and your standards don't conform to it, so I'm asking for waivers from your standards. Because it does not meet my design. Just want to make sure that's a very important point that came out of this case. That to Chair Zister's point. The city spent two years establishing objective standards. Uh, because we wanted to set the the table for what residential buildings look like. The project comes in and uses density bonus. In fact, if if the objective standards prevent them from meeting something that they want to design themselves. They can use the waivers, uh, to do that.
And as a frustrated attorney, I would point out that that as designed language is nowhere in the statute. Uh, the statute basically says that, uh, they are entitled to a waiver from standards that would. Prevent them from, uh, building the building at the, with the affordable units that they are requesting. Doesn't talk about as designed at all, but.
I'm confused, where is the, where is the as designed language?
It's from the case. That is the way, that is the way the, yes, the court interpreted the statute.
Oh, well.
Yeah, I could add a little bit more. I mean, City San Diego had actually requested that the case not published, I believe, was. Because they didn't, although they, the case was actually favorable, I think, to the City San Diego's decision to approve the project. They didn't want it published for this very reason, because of the as designed language coming out of it. I would mention also though, that although we have these objective development design standards. And although that they are, because of this law and the current court case and law environments preempted. We still will have them be applicable to non-state density bonus law projects. So whenever somebody comes up with a standard project, market rate project, they still have force of effect.
I do have a question regarding six eighty-four, in case we're done with. State density bonus.
Time, okay, we also have questions on the, yeah. They definitely got us, uh.
Just got a mini, mini question. Just on a real small item, it just really struck me as surprising. Uh. And because we've done a lot, we have a lot of. Tree removal appeals that have come before the planning commission over the years, and those are always tough cases. The city has a pretty good ordinance on saving just certain couple of main types of trees, you know, ash, oak. Forget all ready the other ones. But so I guess my surprise is, Stephen, when you, when you say that the tree preservation. Is a design element, isn't that, uh, an ecological? Uh, desire of the city rather than a design element?
So I'll, 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 I'll get started. We, we, there. So I, I, it, it is a requirement that you preserve or protect trees on site when they're redwood, oaks, cedar, national, certain findings are met or established. So this is a form of development requirement on a project. Now, the city, there are findings for when a concession or waiver may be denied. But the bar is so incredibly high, the city would need to, if they were to take an argument of an ecological impact or otherwise. We would need to establish in the record of with a preponderance of findings and evidence. That the removal of those particular trees would cause such an adverse health and safety impact. For which there is no satisfiable mitigation measure that may be imposed on the project, like replacement of of different trees on the property. That could offset that impact. In order for the city to make such a determination for denial. They would need, we would practically need to have those studies and those upfront. And they, they would already need to be established. So it would be exceedingly difficult for the city to. Deny those trees which are being requested for removal. So it is a form of development requirement, just to reiterate. And it would be very challenging to deny that request.
And 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 the whole, the whole tree code. It, it, that's just our local requirement. This is, it's not that stopped up by some. State level environmental protection stuff.
It, it is not. I mean, there are, there is still CEQA. The California Environmental Quality Act still is in play. If those trees happen to be habitat to raptors or. Hummingbirds, there might be imposition of conditions of approval that during the bird nesting season, those trees may not be removed or. It might be, but as far as mitigation, those would be examples of. Our circumstances where there are mitigating measures which may be imposed on the project to lessen the impact. Of that to a less significant level.
That'd be tough to, in in a typical neighborhood, unless it's like adjacent to a creek or something like that, right?
And even, and even that.
Even that. Anything else on this section? While we move to six eighty-four. I I'll, I'll start because, you know, when, when I read it, this was, I was going, oh, it's, you know, for ten or fewer units, but then. Um, then it's like. Then I see the under five acres, I'm going, well, there are a few eight units, uh, and under five acres seem to job. So. I guess my question is, this has a bigger impact potentially. Uh, tell me if it has a bigger impact potentially. Than for what we typically have seen in terms of a small development. On a, on a, on a, on a one or two parcels, you know, like Uni Avenue where we built eight units on. On a empty parcel, um, it, does this have implications for? Bigger acreages where they are subdivide, I, I don't understand. Overall implication for, um, more than for, you know, other than for less than two units, ten units. Assistant. You have a comment, question?
I think committee resists.
Oh, you want to take that too? Yeah, sure. Good idea. Good, yeah. Yeah, we can start again.
Thank you for your patience.
Are you good?
No.
Okay, Stephen, so I I I I I'm I'm just, you know, not clear on on this. It's like my first grade is okay, it's just for for where there's less than ten units or less, but then type C five acres, you see ten lots, you see the the numbers. Explain to me how this, does this really have a a bigger impact on bigger developments?
So it could. Um, we haven't really seen this bill exercised, but there is a scenario where you could have it a lot, say, less than five acres, four acres. It's case study. And the the board developed that site with nine lots with nine units on a very small portion of that larger lot, say, he took an acre of it, built nine units in nine lots. And the tenth lot was a much larger lot, which is the the remaining three acres. They then complete the project, and now they have a new three acre lot. They then apply for six eighty-four for that remaining three acre lot, and they build a new nine lot subdivision with a two acre remaining parcel. That that's a possible application of the law because I I don't know to what extent it contemplates piecemealing or progressively adding. We'll have to look into that more. It's part of our formal, like when we're working the urgency ordinance, as well as our our uh absolutely as part of the formal adoption of permanent standards. Intent of us right now is to get on the books something.
So we don't really understand what intent of the the law is in terms of what they were figuring was going to happen as a result of this.
Well, I I think that insofar that the law provides for that to occur, without any clear limitation to prevent for it, generally speaking, most of these laws are meant to be read in the betterment and favoring of the creation of more housing. So as far as the legislative intent, if that is a result which would could result in more housing units. I'm inclined to believe that that would have been the intent of the state legislature and likely how ACD would favorably land on it as well as they have on past legislative updates. Whenever there's there's ambiguity, they always try to land more favorably in 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 terms of unit produ- production. Uh, just because we do have the map up here on screen and just kind of clarify kind of an oddity of why the parcels which have been selected are shown. Although we see any multifamily zone, you do see on the map here mixed use properties, properties of mixed use land designation, because they do constitute a type of multifamily zone, it allows for multifamily. And then lots of density is much higher than what you typically think that would be included. But we have some sites which are like transit oriented mix use fifty seven acres to the acre. So you're thinking just ten units is the applicability of this law, and it says on the next slide, we're saying may result in thirty acres to the acre. But it also provides for in situations where you're a designated housing opportunity site or not a designated site. The maximum allowable density out planned for for the site as well. So it doesn't mean that you have to fall under thirty units per acre either. It just means that you either have to kind of comply with your general plan, and you says designation when you're doing this project. Or thirty units to the acre. It's kind of an interesting combination. Now, granted, for those largest sites, like going back to the map here, if you were a transit oriented site, fifty seven acres to the acre. In order to hit that, you'd have to have a very small lot, like you're talking like a six thousand square foot lot, you're chopping up into those six hundred square foot parcel sizes. But if that were to happen, that's actually at that density range. So you could develop even a transit oriented site, one of our highest density designations in the city, where we're contemplating those big towers with SP six eighty-four.
So 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 you're saying by the six thousand square foot lot using six eighty-four, they could possibly build ten, even though that is more than thirty units to the acre?
Correct. The law only provides that you may build up less than equals to thirty years per per acre. And then it provides a separate section, which is the only circumstances where you are designated or not a designated house.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you. So I just wanted some clarification on the affordable um affordable units so far. So at this hour, if tomorrow morning you get to your desk and there's an application on your desk. You know, let's say they want to build nine units. There's no affordable requirement because it's less than ten.
E- excepting in circumstances where it is a designated housing opportunity site, in which case then the affordability requirement imposed on the parcel is that which had been projected as part of the house. But otherwise, the city's inclusionary ordinance would not apply.
Would not apply. Now, um come come your uh urgency ordinance, the the urgency ordinance for six eighty-four. Could that change the affordable requirement?
To impose an inclusionary requirement on less than? It it could. It absolutely could.
And but but the effective date of that is when, like how some people put the application in, and it was before this uh MFTDS went into effect, their grandfather that they said this doesn't apply to us because our application was put in before.
As an urgency ordinance, it would go into effect immediately. So so there wouldn't be the typical thirty days after second reading type play like we experienced with the MFTDS. So be in in the force of effect immediately. Correct. Now, I I would also mention here that in order for the city to do such a to to impose such a inclusionary requirement. It would need to do so across the board because it is incongruent with the law to impose a standard specifically to a project due to its exercise of SB six eighty-four. So you would have to apply it citywide as part of the urgency ordinance as well, which certainly expand the effectiveness of the urgency ordinance.
Which which is which is probably not like to have this case.
Does it definitely changes the stakeholders involved?
Yeah, I guess my my back row question, Stephen, I kind of want to get ahead of ourselves. I know we can't talk about these specific projects, but do we have right now, do we have projects pretty far along in the discussion phase in which these new laws will have significant uh impact?
Great question. I I would say I think the development community by and large, as well as the planning community across the state of California is still catching up.
Catching up.
The speed. We are informing our development community of this law when they do come in and they're appear to be presented with challenges. This law would seemingly benefit from the the exercise thereof. I could think of one project which could be pursuing this in the near term. In Campbell, six eighty-four, six eighty-four. That 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 they that they've spoken with the planner staff, planning staff already about possible use of it.
Any else question?
A discussion point, but I don't think I have any questions.
Yeah, well, it's it's just, this is just a study session, so. Right? So we're just studying.
Yeah, the thing I'd say was, looks like the city, uh the state is in ways that perhaps state might intend when they work the law, have taken away our discretion. And given the last meeting where I said that we have even slightly this bit of discretion, the city is looking to, perhaps this city will exploit that in ways that city did not say that we would, and kind of get what the state's coming from, like. You know, this kind of discretion is so often misused, and I can see why the decision was made, even though it it seems like that the bankers hold the city, which is seems to come out of nowhere. But the same uh same subject, like that's how CEQA got so large. A series of court decisions which pulled things that were nowhere in the law out of it, I think originally applied to like major actions by the government or something like that, just had to write a whole book. It ballooned into the foundation of modern environmental law because that was a a thing that activists, lawyers, and judges wanted. Like, see where they come came from on this. There's a perceived problem that discretion is exploited. And so just getting rid of that discretion because of uh has been misused. How to get it?
You know, I I just, I mean, I would say that there's no no doubt that that's uh taking away states trying to take away a lot of the discretion authorities because, you know, has there's this housing crisis has been going on for a couple of decades now. Locally, that didn't happen, so the state kind of has provided a lot of political cover for local folks, but but then you go, then you go, do you go too far and uh you know, I think we all agree the need for the housing is market rate housing, they had market rate housing, huge crisis, and we got to get going, and cities just haven't done it. Now the state's taking the initiative. Uh, but they're, you know, but and then they go into some things that, you know, it's just not great planning. I mean, you know, we all, when we say, hey, no, no parking required, oh, my God, we were all worried, but they're, you know, developers want to have a project that works, so you haven't really got too many projects with no parking yet. And that's why I look at the setback thing, I you know, I I read Fred Stevens' presentation and read our report. Uh, you know, setbacks, just common sense, good planning type stuff, and you could take that away. And, oh, my God, you know, Jesus is going too far, but but then, you know, push comes to shove and reality happens. Will that be a big issue? Like, you know, I I don't know. And I will, yeah, I'd like to see one of our religious institute, I know one of our religious institutions has come up, has been talking about a hundred percent affordable project. So I'd like to see them go, you know, two hundred percent affordable and not have any setbacks with their neighbors and take out every protected tree. Don't have any parking there, and let's see how that goes, you know, then I think and I think Campbell would be leading the way on the on the just. Yeah, well, yeah, I mean. It turns out, I mean, I I don't know all the churches in town, but there's a number of places that have more open space than, you know, other other places, right? It's it's some of the fewer place, it is some of the fewer places where they have, you know, whether it's like Saint Lucys or or the the church off of Llewellyn. I mean, there's these big open areas that they have that are being left unused, right? So I mean, it it makes perfect sense that they can string, putting in uh uh affordable, you know, and since it would be a hundred percent affordable housing, it's it's a, to me, it's a great, great solution, you know? Oh, sure. You know, if if those things can be, so I have, I have no problem with that kind of incentive to do that kind of thing, whether or not it will happen, it's a thing, you know, I mean, I I drive by the the home home churches, our parking lot almost every day, so it's like, wow. But it's usually that filled, you know, I mean, it's it's that used up.
I think, yeah, for sure, there's some great sites here for affordable projects. But I'm just trying to say that the worst case scenario probably in reality is not going to happen too often if it does.
And the higher education thing is 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 like college, university. We we don't have that issue, right?
So um as far, you you know, I I agree with Commissioner Crane in the sense that we experienced this very same exact phenomenon with SB nine. When it first came, it's like, oh, my God, or or, you know, uh, our neighbor, here goes the neighborhood, they're going to replace every house with four units and and it hasn't happened, you know, because there's so many other factors involved that we're not uh we're not considering, we're not talking about, you know, and so um as a practicing civil engineer, I get tons of calls from people who want to do SB nine. And once they understand all the regulations involved. That doesn't make sense for me. It's the neighbor started. So um so the same thing with this one, I think that the uh the extreme case, we can talk about it, but it's not reality, you know, that's, you know, what we have what happens.
Well, I mean, you know, to 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 Mr. Gray's point, or to Commissioner Bookbinder's point, it's like you see, you still see the pushback from residents, you know, on any development. You know, whether it's the the mobile home users uh next to the the, you know, the tech center property, or whether it's like, uh, you know, uh, the San Jose project, it's Cambrian Plaza, you know, which is a a massive redevelopment and, you know, adjacent, you know, they're worried about traffic and and all that stuff. And it's like, well, but that's going to have senior housing, affordable housing, commercial, a hotel, it's going to be you know, and then people, people don't want change, right? The 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 folks in the Cambrian area don't want, don't want, uh, you know, they already got a lot of traffic out in Camden and and I I get it, you know, but but you know, e- 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 every time there's something comes up. You know, it's, there's there's always a pushback, and even when it doesn't make it's 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 not even reasonable, you know, I mean, I I see that next door all the time. It's like like, oh, they're going to put up this new thing here. It's like, well, you know, it's in a previous commercial spot, it's really not going to affect the neighborhood that much. So I I all I would like to know is sometimes with some of these things that come out, like SB six eighty-four or the other things, what was the rationale? What was, who was writing this up for what reason? And and what was the thinking behind? It's it's obviously, it it's it's not somebody from Campbell, it's probably somebody from San Francisco or somebody from San Diego or something that, you know, has a has a constituency and this is what they want to see done, and and they get agreed about it, but so it always, to me, it's always would be always good to kind of see behind what what's behind that. And some of the stuff that we've seen early was things perfect sense, you know, in terms of you know, spots, good stuff, SB nine, things like that, where it makes the the question always is 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 it's going to practically happen? And then if yeah, I'm not going to be around twenty or thirty years from now, whether twenty, thirty years now, people are going to be correct, you know, or forty years from now.
One big factor is if you have a mortgage on your house and you want to spread your lot, bank may not be happy to answer, yeah, if you're going to do that, maybe. But I don't want my son to fall. But 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 in regard to your question, how did this come about? One of the pieces of uh literature that I read was six eighty-four is the counter, not the counter, but the um comparable um to SB nine. SB nine applies to single family, this applies to multifamilies. That's how, that's one way that they explain, you know, because those said, eh, I don't have a single family, how about me, you know? Okay, here's something that can apply to your situation.
Any more comments, questions? We wrap this up? All right. We don't have to, there's no resolution for this. It was just a it's just a study session. Oh, my God. Thank you.
But as always, Stephen, I think you did a great job.
Yeah, that's a lot to digest, too. All right. And 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 Daniel's sick, Stan is taking him sick. Okay, well, we hope it gets better. Okay, I'm going to adjourn, right? So um oh, wait, I'm sorry. Any uh report uh report from the uh from the director, I'm sorry.
Stay in the way of you and enjoy the rest of your emails.
That's all right.
Few quick notes, I'll make it quick. Uh, American Planning Association has an annual conference, and if one or two of you have gone to this, uh, this year, September twenty eighth Riverside. The reason I bring it up now is we're trying to balance some budget issues. There's some interest for the planning commission to sign you up in the next month, proportion to this year's budget. So don't have to memorize all that, and I will send you a reminder, and just ask you to get back to us the next few weeks. One, uh, number two, anyone who went to the LEED training and against yeah, just remember second year receipts if you want to reverse.
Yes, thank you, yeah, I'm glad. Remember that.
But fiscal year ends pretty soon, so just.
Basically, I see.
Number three, I don't think I uh but person's out the commission. So happy to report, uh, the city of Campbell's Planning Division has been awarded by the American Planning Association Northern California Section, which includes over a hundred cities with a uh award of excellence.
Wow.
Which means basically like the best planning agency. Not not that they all apply for it, but you would only get this award of excellence if you merit high quality uh planning projects.
So are we the only ones, or will we uh, were there a few other?
I don't have an answer to that question. I say it was competitive. I've been on the jury for these. They don't bring these out like candy. Uh the award of excellence is something to be acknowledged.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. It's been for a state award, uh, Senior Planner Stephen Rose is helping out with that, and wish us luck. If you go to the whole APA conference, who knows, you might see. Uh, number four.
Uh, number four, just a, a heads up, uh, there'll be a training on a act called the Levine Act. Uh, that's coming up and our city clerks are named this. Uh, the best understanding has to do with political contributions related that could be made, uh, and related to items that might be coming before the planning commission. A lot having to do with financial disclosures and forms and. Bill might have more to say about it, but the head, heads up is that the city clerk will be organizing a training setting by itself. Uh, two last points, one is, uh, happy to report, uh, we hired a plan check examiner in our billing department. So, uh, this position on just helping projects through, or billing official or sequence directors. Had to do this, that takes place along the network, so someone who's just dedicated this. Super bright individual, we heard from city Sacramento, her name's Sylvia, so should see a lot more efficiencies, you know, folks going through our process. And we're going through final interviews to hire an unhoused coordinator, so this is funded by three-year grant for destination home. It will help with our. Uh, last but not least, want to report, if you remember the Roaksen Home Still In Project, did go to council, last meeting was approved. Uh, there's a press piece about this, we'll see how's a spotlight, we'll look at it. Uh, and that's it, oh, the very, very last one, I always get asked about the status of the crest of the project.
Yes.
Asked four times a week. So, uh, the developer called me personally and said, I want to let you know that we're absolutely going forward, getting ready to pull permits. Doing our traffic management plan now. So, uh, I always wait until the permits are actually pulled. They are going forward, so you should start this activity in the next few months. Thanks, well, that's all.
Great.
Uh, one question, um, when will we be seeing some policy work? Policy work? Policy work? Okay, uh, you can like legislative actions come up for you. Yeah, well, the one, uh, coming on the horizon, you'll see in the next few months is our modifications to the inclusionary housing ordinance. And commercial linkage fee, so, uh, we had gone to the, this is on part of the housing element, key word plan. Establishing commercial linkage fees, you have a new commercial building, there's a fee you would pay for, it would go into our housing program, stand up housing for workers. So the city council did some initial review of options, gave, uh, feedback to go forward with a certain fee identified, it's a low fee, it's about nine dollars a square foot. So we're working on that and then we're doing some modifications in inclusionary housing ordinance based on council direction. Right now, you have to be ten units or over to be inclusionary housing. City council generally agreed with some, some follow-ups to drop that down to the five range. Got some questions on would it semi lower density projects? So to answer your question, Commissioner Buckbinder, those ordinances, I think, were in probably June, July timeframe.
So in follow-up to that, is in Luffy a possibility?
It is, yeah.
If they were to lower the threshold, because many smaller projects, they see that requirement, they, you know, walk away, but.
Yeah.
If there's a new fee, that's.
We identified two categories for in Luffy, because we wanted to balance getting units, money and we like that both. Uh, so one is small projects in the five to six range, you could pay in Luffy. Uh, so that's one option. And two, there's areas where today, let's say the calculation is you have to provide ten point two inclusionary housing units. Two is just sort of washes away in terms of, you provide ten units, but we're proposing for that fraction, since there's an excess, that they would, they could pay a fee for that point two. And then they get some money into the per foot.
Makes sense.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, you turn to eight twenty-eight.
Oh, there you go.